Is that reconvene?
Reconvene.
The special meeting? Is there any final action?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, Madam Mayor. The City Council authorized the city to initiate one legal action. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So you need to adjourn it, and then I'll open the floor.
Okay, so we are adjourning the special meeting and adjourning the...
We'll convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Chalam Chirla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
And Howell.
Here. And if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any agenda updates? I know we have additional information for Agenda Item 12. Is there any...
Yes, Madam Mayor. There is a revised staff report with a revised proposed ordinance for Item 12 on tonight's agenda. A copy has been previously provided to you, and they are also available on the table in the back.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we move to business from the floor, which is your opportunity to speak to us on matters that are not on the agenda. And right now, I have one request to speak. If anybody else would like to speak, business from the floor, please get yourself a blue card and bring it up to the officer at the end of the desk.
Okay, Madam Mayor, your first speaker this evening will be Erin Hedsess. Come on down. And we'll start the three-minute timer for you when you get ready. No, to your left. There you go. That's the one. Yep, go ahead.
Good evening, Folsom City Council. I'm a carpenter by trade, and I would just urge you that any projects or developments that come before you, that contain local hire language, that you support it. Any projects that have prevailing wage language in it, healthcare and apprenticeship language, you would support it because, as a carpenter myself, I went through the apprenticeship program, and I have prospered and done well for myself. As far as local hire, that is awesome and amazing because many of us drive many hours to and from work. So when you do land a job that's close by, it's great because you're home and your quality of life goes up. Although, in my case, when I got home at 4:30, my wife looked at me and said, "What are you doing home?" I said, "Well, I told you I had a local job." But for so many years, you know, I get home at 6:30 or 7:00. But I think after 25 years of being married, that, you know, she deserves a little time by herself. So that concludes my remarks. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. And that moves us up to scheduled presentations. And the first one is presentation of the 2022 Community Service Day results.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Lorraine Pejoni, Parks and Rec Director. On September 17th, we had another successful Community Service Day. With so many volunteers and happy faces, it was time... Sorry. With so many volunteers and happy faces, it was a true pleasure to work with such wonderful people. From me and my staff and our steering committee, we really want to thank the council for their support, the community for their support, the opportunity to, once again, just participate and be part of such a great day of service. We do have a quick overview of the results and some of the stats that we got from the Community Service Day, and Tom Hellman will share that with you tonight. So thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tom Hellman, Recreation Community Services Manager. The dust has semi-settled on the Ninth Annual Community Service Day. Many of the projects have been completed. The process to culminate that entire day is still in the works as we give some reimbursements back out and to make sure that everybody has turned in what is needed to, as far as any materials and or equipment provided to them for the work that they have done. But I've got some information I'd like to share with you this evening. So on this very special day, we had 1,620 volunteers participate to deliver over 98 projects citywide. Those projects included both the projects that were identified throughout the city, some of those that I spoke about, like at BT Collins, or the picking up of the trash, or at the Natoma Station Pond Overlook. And then there's also a number of projects in there that are dedicated to the Neighbors Helping Seniors Program that we'll also talk about. Collectively, we served over 4,860 volunteer hours total that day of providing service to the community, which is an amazing feat of its own of all of those people dedicating their time, not just for the short duration, which is roughly about three hours, but really also our project leads getting things ready for the event and for the projects that day. And then some of those projects did run a little bit longer than three hours, so they were out there into the middle of the afternoon as well. So that's a good rough calculation, but an amazing number. Our community food drive yielded 30 tons of food to the Twin Lakes Food Bank. In poundage, that's 61,000 pounds. And that's an amazing thing, that the Twin Lakes Food Bank was very proud to receive. They worked very hard to sort through all those deliveries and make sure that they had what they have for distribution to families and people of need in this community and around. Our donation drive was extremely successful. As you can see up there with the highlighted gala numbers, we had 68 bikes provided to us that will be refurbished and reused. We had 121 purses provided to us. We had 366 letters that will be mailed out to military personnel. We had nine bags, very large bags of Legos collected that will be distributed. We had 20 boxes of eyeglasses, and you'll see there, that was a 650% increase from the year over as far as an average. Roughly, that's about 1,000 pairs of eyeglasses that were donated this year alone. In normal years of what they told me was right around 150 to 200 pairs of eyeglasses. They had four large bags of yarn and two bags of fabric that were donated. And then a new donation that we had this year was materials and equipment and supplies for shelter pets, or, sorry, pet supplies at our shelters. And that's with 30 large boxes of material that was provided to us that day as well for them. Also happening on that day over here at the community center was our blood drive, where they provided, or they received 22 pints of blood. But what's most interesting in that case was we had six people donate for the very first time, which was great to see. And those 22 pints of blood will go help roughly 16 people as through recovery and whatnot through that blood need. Our Neighbors Helping Seniors Project, we had 62 projects that were conducted that day. I think, as you were all there, you heard Greg Kiefer ask for more volunteers. We actually added two projects that morning to help these total 62 residents from a number of different things, from just general yard maintenance, to some gutter cleaning, to some fence repair and painting, to some landscaping. And you see different folks here, from kids, to families, to scout groups, to different organizations involved there. So it was really a great day for them, and a lot of folks that needed that help and appreciated that help. This event couldn't be possible with, first, all of your support and the great staff here at the City of Folsom that were able to dive into this, as well as our steering committee members that dedicated lots and lots of time to put this on, but also our sponsors that contributed to that. Intel has been a presenting sponsor for nine years that this event has been going on, and they were there that day, and they're a tremendous asset to this community and to this event. So a big thank you to Intel. Couple new sponsors came on board this year. I'd like to recognize the Rotary Club of Folsom, who is present here tonight, as well as the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, who's also present here tonight as recognition of those sponsorship opportunities and that help there. The folks at Lakeside did an amazing job with hosting us that morning. They had their own volunteer army there that morning, very early, getting things ready. So it was really great to see that happening. Some more of our silver and bronze sponsors that took place. We have a representative tonight from PGL Financial that is here, and thank to them for their support, as well as Kaiser Permanente, who has been a long-term supporter of the Community Service Day as well. Lots of new sponsors that came on board this year and hope that we can continue with those great partnerships as we move forward as well. Fun little logo that you saw when we presented here last month and on the T-shirts that you all received as well, and really, this is what this event is all about, just this opportunity to serve Folsom, to beautify it, to make it a great day for everybody and to enjoy that. So with that, let me close this out, and I'll show you this recap video that we have for you tonight.
So pretty much what this project entails was pouring a couple of footings in the butt mitt, building a deck. We also had to move a little bit of earth here, put in some straw wattle for protecting the water in the pond nearby, and then we're just spreading some mulch along the front of Natoma Station Drive.
This all started as I was walking the trails here, and I noticed there's so much trash. I've noticed that for many years, so I contacted the city, and they said, "Hey, why don't you be the site leader for a cleanup project coming in September?" I didn't know what to expect, but I got maybe 25 volunteers out here, and we're filling up a huge debris box full of stuff, so I'm really excited and proud of all the volunteers. So it's been a great day so far.
We are participating in Folsom's Community Service Day, and at Vista de Lago, we're helping beautify the campus. So we've got people picking up trash all over the campus, and then, right now, we've got a lot of bark moving going on. So we have, I think, over 50 yards of bark that were donated, and now we are spreading them and just beautifying the front of the school and making our way towards the back today.
We just really appreciate the community's involvement in our schools, great communities, make great schools. And so they're not only here at Vista de Lago today, but also at Folsom High School and Empire Oaks Elementary, and over 250 volunteers, I think, are just coming to our campuses alone, all of the Community Service Day volunteers. Thank you!
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 With that, I want to pass over to the officer a couple of things for each of one of you. These were a special keychain we had made for our project leaders and steering committee members that have Folsom Community Service Day on them, and on the back, it's inscribed with the hashtag #ServFolsom. So I'll just pass these over to the officer for you. And with that, that'll conclude what I have to share with you tonight, but if there are any questions or comments that I can address for you at this time, I'd be happy to do so.
I have a comment. We need more Neil Kellys in Folsom that take certain parts of the city and own it and keep it beautiful and clean and take ownership of it. So, yeah, great job, Neil Kelly.
Well, Tom, thank you. I know for everyone here, this is for all of you. That's an awesome job. Lot of work, you know, being part of that team. Wonderful.
Thanks to all the members of the community that actually worked on this, and I'm guessing the number was actually probably significantly higher than 1,620 because they didn't all sign in in the morning. I'm pretty sure, and the Roretarians were out working on that building for like a week before Community Service Day even happened. But I especially want to thank the steering committee because I know you guys spend pretty much, most of the year, planning the event and coordinating everything, and that's a lot of effort goes into that, and I thank you guys for doing that work. Agreed.
And I also wanted to add my thanks to the steering committee and wanted to thank my staff. Tom Hellman, thank you so much for your leadership. Lorraine Pejoni, Parks and Rec Director, thank you for outstanding leadership, taking over on this event yesterday, this year, and best one yet. I'm just astounded, so thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other comments, the next item is proclamation of the mayor proclaiming October 2022 as National Arts and Humanities Month, and Councilmember Aquino is going to present that one.
Okay, this is a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming October 2022 as National Arts and Humanities Month. And here with me today, we have the Chair of our Arts and Culture Commission, Marybel Wyatt, the Vice Chair, Kat Berry, and Sunny Mitchell, the Director of the Wildwood Performing Arts Foundation. So whereas National Arts and Humanities Month has been celebrated for nearly 30 years by cities and states to recognize the importance of culture in the lives of individuals and the health of thriving communities, and whereas the Folsom City Council recognizes that arts and cultural activities benefit the residents and visitors of Folsom, and these activities are a significant contributor to Folsom's high quality of life, and whereas the City of Folsom provides the opportunity for the community to enjoy the benefits of art and cultural activities through numerous programs and an active professional art gallery, and whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country, and whereas the Arts and Culture Commission works with the community to increase public awareness of, understanding of, and participation in the humanities and the arts, and whereas Folsom has a diverse and vibrant art scene with local organizations, providing opportunities for the public to celebrate and participate in performances, exhibits, and events throughout the year. Now, on behalf of our mayor, Kerry Howell, we do hereby proclaim October 2022 as National Arts and Humanities Month in the City of Folsom, and invite our residents to recognize the contribution of the arts to the community. We encourage everyone to visit the art gallery and to attend the many special cultural activities offered within the city. Proclaim this 11th day of October 2022. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you, I will. We joked that we were gonna present something to you involving singing, dancing, and comedy. A little more planning, possibly next year. I accept this proclamation on behalf of the Art and Cultural Commission, and we all are here because Folsom is unique. And we have a lot of conversations around expanding. What are we going to do as Folsom expands to bring more and more of this, art and culture, to our great little corner of the world here? One thing that is coming up this month, I'm going to let Sunny Mitchell talk about a unique event that's coming up that you should look at being a part of.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sunny Mitchell. I am the founding director of the Wildwood Performing Arts Foundation, and we are so thrilled to collaborate with the City of Folsom to present the fifth anniversary of the Folsom Cash Art Trail Dinner and Celebration on October 21st. That's next Friday. We'll have never-before-seen memorabilia. We've got live music. We'll have a live auction as well, and we'll also have some fantastic special guests, including John Carter Cash himself and his cousin Lori Carter Bennett. Kevin Keighley, Assemblyman Kevin Keighley is slated to speak. It's just going to be a fantastic evening. And on a personal note, I am so thrilled to be able to have the stars aligned to make this event happen and to be part of it. I think the Cash Art Trail is so special, and to be able to be a part of making something grow and thrive and start building an awareness and a bridge with those folks outside of Folsom. We actually have people coming from Germany to be a part of this celebration. It's just amazing. And thank you so much to the City of Folsom for believing in this event and partnering with me on it. We end on the 22nd with a huge music festival. John Carter Cash will be playing at that music festival at the Dan Russell Rodeo Arena. And all of these events go to further awareness for not only our arts programs, but also the Cash Art Trail. So thank you so much, and hooray for arts and culture.
I had something to add. I also want to bring to attention not just the amazing musical events that Sunny has brought to our city, but also she is expanding this into our schools. So with her poets and pioneers assemblies and field trips for our students that align with the fifth grade standard, she's now going to bring this into our schools, and I'm very excited to be a part of the inauguration of this. So this foundation is doing so much for us, and we're very grateful.
And our next presentation is an update of the Capital Southeast Connector Segment D-3.
Yes, speaking of singing, dancing, and comedy, this evening, I've invited Brian Reed to come give a presentation to you all to provide an update on the Capital Southeast Connector Folsom segment, and to let everyone know that we're having the ribbon cutting for Segment D-3A on Wednesday, October 26, at 10 o'clock in the morning. And invitations should have already gone out or should be going out shortly.
Are we letting the Rancho public elected officials do all the talking that day?
I will be the master of ceremonies, so I'll have some playoff music to limit their exposure.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. It's my pleasure to show what we've been doing on the Southeast Connector. It's a project that's been going on for several years, and first, I'd like to share what the connector is and what has been done to date. Connector is a 34-mile, four-lane expressway with a Class 1 bike trail. When built out, you'll be able to ride from El Dorado County all the way down El Grove. Currently, the Segment A2 on Camera Road, 99 Grantline Road interchange, Grantline railroad grade separation, and Grantline Road in El Grove has been completed or under construction. The county Segment D-3 to White Rock and Grantline has been completed, and we've tied that into our D-3A project, which will be having the ribbon cutting on October 26. Additionally, El Dorado County has completed the Silver Valley interchange. This is a recent photo of the Prairie City Road and the Class 1 trail and the Scott Road extension. Scott Road was added with the help of the JPA, and we're going to be paving on Friday, Saturday, Monday, and Tuesday.
How far is that paving on the Scott Road going to go?
It's going to tie into Scott Road.
So it's the whole realigned section?
The whole realigned section. And it'll also tie in the SRVA Gate 4, so when they have bigger events, they'll be able to utilize that to move traffic.
Okay, and has the Homeowners Association or anybody in Rancho Mariachi had been made aware of when that pavement's going to be complete?
We've been coordinating with Matt Lanta.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll be...
Right, is that the roundabout there on that intersection?
It is a roundabout.
Right, thank you. Woo-hoo!
Yeah, so, and that's our future Corporation Yard site, so we'll have the infrastructure, at least the roadway infrastructure, in when we ever get to start working on that. This is the future Oak Avenue just up the road. You can see there's a little detention pond to the side. It's one of three that we helped build with the connector. And development seems to be going great guns over there at the moment. This is the bridge over Alder Creek. With the council's blessing, we were able to add the pedestrian bridge and bike trail, which will be the location of the ribbon cutting. This is East Bidwell, and kind of the end of Segment D-3A and the started Segment D-3B. The update for D-3B is that we have the alignment set. Our engineer, Doc, in engineering, has been working with the plan area engineers, and we've come up with an alignment that's palpable to everybody. The environmental was cleared with the original D-3 project, which we scaled down to D-3A in order to be able to finance a portion of it. There will have to be an update to that environmental when we get D-3B going. Upcoming milestones for D-3B is securing funding for the right-of-way and final design, the right-of-way acquisition, final design, utility relocation, and construction funding. I'm anticipating having some money left over from D-3A that we can utilize to start the design process on D-3B. And once we've finished the project and all of the funding issues, I'll have a better idea on how far we can go.
Brian, do we know when that light's going to be functional at East Bidwell?
The light?
The signal?
The signal's functional now.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why it kind of threw me, because I...
Oh, sorry.
I just drove through it.
I haven't been out there in a while.
That's okay, yeah. We will have to put Scott and Prairie City on flash during some of the paving this next week, but that's a super temporary situation.
No, I asked that question largely because, when we did the delay study a year and a half or two years ago, whenever that was, that intersection in the PM peak time was the longest queue.
Yeah.
So...
It backs up quickly during the commute hours.
Right, so I'd be very interested to see how much the presence of that signal there changes that queuing.
This is a transition looking east towards El Dorado Hills. You can see that there's still some green out there. Some of it's urban drainage, but if we look further up, you know, down here on this side, that's actually groundwater, even in this drought situation that we're going to have to deal with on D-3B. This is the railroad location. We'll have to figure out how we're going to cross that when we start the design process. And here is the end of the project into El Dorado County. We've got the preliminary geometrics. This is Wilson Ranch Road, and this is Payne Road, and so the JPA had worked out a situation where there can be access from Payne Road to the connector through Wilson Ranch to kind of minimize any smaller connections to the roadway. There'd be a ride-in and ride-out only. But as it stands, the final design is not complete, so I'm sure there'll be some modifications as we go along.
And do we have any information about what El Dorado County's doing, or is that going to be included in that discussion that we have with Supervisor Hydon next week or whenever that meeting is?
In discussions with staff, they have moved down many fiscal years from now, but they're willing to work with us to maybe combine the projects and complete it at the same time, just based on funding.
Yeah, they've done their preliminary engineering for what's called the E1 segment, which is from the county line to Latrobe Road, so that is...
That's the one that they had to relocate, or they had to relocate that senior living facility because it was in the middle of the road?
Yes, I think you're right.
I don't really have much more to say. That's the comedy portion. Tom really showed that I have to have my game. I'll put some music background to it next time.
I'll ask a couple of questions, Brian. So just for the benefit of the public who may be watching, so these two segments, our city staff is taking a lead on the project management, if you will, but we're not funding these segments.
No, we're working with the JPA to get the funding in place.
Right, okay.
So the funding that we would have left over on this project would be funding that the JPA provided for us.
Right, okay. I just want to make it clear to the public that this is not coming out of Folsom's general fund. So could you go back to like the first or second slide that shows those different segments broken up? And with your pointer, there you go. So D-3A is what we're going to do the ribbon cutting or whatever, right? 3B is the next one we'll be in charge of. And so then the other ones, the blue, purple, and yellow, and orange, those are already done at the other end?
Yes.
And so it's the stuff in the middle?
Yes.
That is not constructed? And is this is dependent on Measure A passing in order to get that funded, or...
Not entirely. Measure A will include a significant amount of funding that can go towards the connector, but not nearly enough to fund the entire thing.
Okay, got it.
And there's still some stickiness I think Mike can address with regard to SECOC's approval and inclusion in the MTP.
Yeah, the regional greenhouse gas targets that we have for all of the communities in the region around Sacramento, the center sections of this project have a significant impact on what our results will be in the future. So there's been quite a bit of debate about how to implement this project while also meeting those greenhouse gas targets, and it requires a lot of mitigation to get there, so news to come. But it'll be ongoing discussions for a while yet.
And Sarah, given that you mentioned the funding, I think it's important to note that although there was significant funding from the JPA, we... that although there was significant funding from the JPA, we owe some thanks to Caltrans and Will Kempton for providing additional state funding that, that helped to get some of this done.
Correct. We had $10 million worth of state funding and $15 million worth of federal funding for the project.
Any other questions for Brian?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Brian. So we will move on to the consent calendar. I'm gonna pull item, oh, we have a request from the public to pull item five, and I'd like to pull item seven just for a comment. Anybody else wanna pull anything?
I'll move four through 10 with the exception of five, and you said seven?
Yes.
Seven.
We have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Chalam, Chirla-
Yes.
Koslowsky-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. So consent item number five, our request to speak is Benjamin Maddox.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ben Maddox. I have applied to the Landscape and Lighting Committee, and I look forward to working in the City of Folsom. Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you.
I'll move items five.
Before I move, I just want to make one comment. And I was talking to Ben earlier today. I said, no, please, visit us, you know, we want to see you, right? It's, Ben, thank you so much for putting this application, and it's important that lighting and landscaping, you know, Lorraine's team is leading. You know, through that, we can probably change the face of Folsom. I mean, you, as a commissioner, directors, whatever, the members of the LNL, you can be the eyes and ears of our city council and seeing how the streets are, how the lights are, even before we get the, a call from the resident, right? And that way, it's, I highly appreciate you putting it, and we have so many vacancies out there. I know, I always look for the, you know, the spotlight to see whether we can find more people. If anyone knows, please send them in our way. We are nice people here, fine people. Okay? Thank you, Ben. I second it.
Okay.
He's, why can't he second it? Second, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Chalam, Chirla?
Yes.
Koslowsky?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. And I pulled item seven. I got it, there was an email today from one of the Folsom residents asking about the, the reasons and justification for the replacement of these tanks. One is significantly undersized, the other one is leaking into the secondary containment, which I will point out for, for the rest of the geeks out there, there's no contamination that's being, that is resulting from this, and that these are both above-ground storage tanks, and they will be moved to the new corp yard when the corp yard moves. So, that was kind of the nature of the question that came in the email today. So, with that, I'll take, I'll accept-
I'll move item number seven.
I second.
I have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Chalam, Chirla-
Yes.
Koslowsky-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. Moves us on to item 11, public hearing. I'm gonna introduce it.
Sure. Your first, your one and only public hearing item this evening is Resolution Number 10924. This is a resolution reducing the annual assessment in the final engineer's report for fiscal year 2223 for Blue Ravine Oaks Number 2, LNL District. Zach.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Zach Paris. I'm your landscape services manager here at the City of Folsom. As Chris has said, this resolution is reducing the annual assessment in the final engineer's report for fiscal year 2223 for the Blue Ravine Oaks Number 2 landscaping and lighting district. This reduction is made pursuant to the original resolution of formation for this district, Resolution Number 8874, approved by council in 2011. The resolution stated in its formation that the rate of assessment was to be reduced in the 11th year of assessment. Fiscal year 2223 is that 11th year, and as such, we have captured that reduction in the engineer's report before you this evening. There have been no other modifications to the report.
Okay, do we have any questions, staff?
Zach, how was the, how was that discrepancy? How did we find out about it?
We had a resident come to one of our LNL committee meetings and just inquire about, he'd been in the district for a long time, and so he said, hey, I remember when we were doing outreach for an overlay, that there was talks of a reduction, and so that pretty much gave us notification to look into this, and we found that the reduction was actually to take place this year. And so hence, we revise the report and make sure that the assessment is correct.
Okay. And I, under the, the now there for section, number three, there's just a slight typo, ravine, I think is missing a V or something. I'm sorry, normally I email those ahead of time and don't, don't point them out, but I was a little bit late in reading this one, so.
It's probably the second one of mine you've caught this year. I'll tighten it up.
Any other questions of staff? I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing nobody coming forward, I will close the public hearing.
I'll move approval of Resolution 10924.
I'll, I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Chalam, Chirla-
Yes.
Koslowsky-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. Moves us to item 12, under new business.
Yeah.
Introduce that.
Yep, item number 12 under new business is ordinance number 1334. This is an ordinance amending Section 5.20.70A2 and repealing Section 52070A13D of the Folsom Municipal Code to increase the number of card tables and allow backline bedding. This will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Howell, Councilmember Steve Banks with the Community Development Department. Not the Steve Banks, the comedian you're all well aware of. This evening, I'm presenting the Cardroom Ordinance Amendment. It's our last meeting in September. We provide you with back on information about the proposed ordinance, and we sought feedback from the council this evening. We're here seeking direction and action from the council. There were two things happening with the proposed ordinance modification. One was to increase the number of card room tables, allowance from nine to 11. There was some additional language listed here on the screen shown in red that provided for future increases in the number of card tables. And in your packet this evening, you notice you received a letter from the state, and they expressed concern regarding the flexibility of this language, and it might look like it might be an automatic increase in the number of card tables within the city. So they were not supportive of the second portion of the language you see on the screen here in red. Staff reached out to the applicant regarding this concern, and the applicant agreed to withdraw that part of the ordinance. So this part of the language after the first sentence will be stricken from this ordinance. The second piece of the ordinance, as you recall, was to allow for the process of backline bedding to occur. Shown in red here is the language which will be struck in from the ordinance, thus allowing backline bedding to occur. As I mentioned, the city received a letter from the state. This is the language as modified, so we're gonna leave the card room increase from nine to 11. However, we're striking the remainder of that language. As I mentioned before you, in September, we consulted with the police department, the fire department, external agencies, code enforcement groups, didn't receive any concerns from any of those groups, and the staff itself did not identify any significant concerns with this, with this ordinance. I would note that the project will be, the specific project will be required to obtain a conditional use permit, and the planning commission would be the approval body for that conditional use permit. It's my understanding the applicant is looking at a site on Iron Point Road, the site of the former Applebee's restaurant, and I think maybe even more recently Casa Ramos Restaurant. So they would be required to obtain a conditional use permit from the planning commission to operate at that particular location. They would also be required to obtain a cardroom license, which would be issued by the city council. And with that, and the modification to the language that's included in your packet this evening, staff does recommend that the city council introduce and conduct the first reading of this ordinance. And as always, I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is behind me this evening as well.
Any questions?
No, thank you for clarifying. I was reading the attorney general's, you know, the letter, and I was wondering which section we are going to strike out. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and we don't, we don't have any requests to speak on this. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address this? Okay, no one's running down here. So do we have a motion?
I'll move ordinance number 1334.
I second it.
You have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
As revised by the revised staff report.
Yes.
As revised by the staff report.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Chalam, Chirla-
Yes.
Koslowsky-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. That moves us to item 13.
Your last item this evening is new business item 13. This is landmark tree considerations and direction to staff.
This is where we get the singing and dancing, right?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Amy Nunez, and I am your city arborist. And I am here before you tonight at your request to bring forward some potential candidates for landmark trees. Oops, okay, hang on. There we go, okay. So back in February, this council saw fit to approve the first application for landmark tree status in 23 years. We got an application from CalISO for a very impressive interior live oak. This picture doesn't do the tree justice. It is a very large specimen, over 100 inches in aggregate diameter. And at the February council meeting, council directed staff to bring forward more potential candidates for landmark trees. And I have some candidates for you tonight, but before we go over those, I think it bears to kind of remind city council and the audience what constitutes a landmark tree. So a landmark tree is a tree that city council decides is exceptionally remarkable. I think we can all agree that trees in general bring a variety of benefits, environmental, health-wise, they increase property values, give us clean air, yada, yada, yada. I could give you a whole presentation on the, the benefits of trees. But landmark trees are exceptionally spectacular for a variety of reasons. Maybe they have historical value, maybe they provide exceptional habitat value, maybe it's a rare species, or maybe it's just a particularly beautiful tree, a tree that gives, makes you do a double take. And there are some perks to having a landmark tree on your property. In addition to having the ecological benefits, landmark trees add to the character of our beautiful city. They add to our distinctive by nature adage. But also, if you have a landmark tree, you can request that the city arborist come out and assess your tree, and if the city arborist decides that your tree needs maintenance, the city will actually provide that maintenance for your tree. Another consideration to keep in mind also is that if you have a landmark tree, city council has to declassify that tree if you want to remove that tree for whatever reason. So with that, I bring you candidate number one. So this is what I have called the Grover Tree, named after the current owner, Leo Grover. If any one here on the dais or here behind me in the audience has driven through Sibley Street, you might recognize this tree. This is a valley oak located on Sibley Street. Trunk diameter of 41 and a half inches, which is roughly 11 feet in circumference. Very large tree in our historic district. And arguably necessary findings that qualify this tree as a landmark tree are historic value given its size. I would put this tree somewhere around 175 years old and superior beauty. Here's a couple more pictures that I've taken. The owner has taken exceptional care of this tree. I would also like this council to know that I personally have educated the owner on our landmark tree program and let them know about the benefits of having a landmark tree. And although they've expressed interest in the program, we have yet to receive an actual Candidate number two, which for the sake of this presentation, I'm calling the dermatology tree, and I'm welcome to better names if, you know, someone from the council has a better suggestion, but-
Why are you calling it the dermatology?
I'm just about to get into that. So this tree is located right in front of a dermatology office on 192 Blue Ravine Road. This tree actually has an interesting story. It is an interior live oak with a trunk diameter of 53 inches, so a pretty large specimen for its species. And this is not the first conversation this tree has had regarding landmark tree status. Back in 2001, when the first tentative parcel map came through for WENCO, this tree was initially slated for removal, but some passionate tree advocates put down a landmark tree application to save this tree, and council at the time saw fit to direct the applicant to redesign their project to save this tree. The applicant did so, and so that application was rescinded.
This tree was saved, as was another tree in front of WENCO.
That is correct.
We made them move the location of the building to save that tree.
And that tree-
And unfortunately, that tree, that tree died a couple of years before the ones that at Taco Loco.
Correct, correct. So this tree is on that same parcel. As far as I've been able to ascertain, there is no evidence of basal decay. The tree is doing fairly well. And so as far as applicable findings go, this tree does have historical value. I would argue it has superior beauty. And quite recently, the stewards of the tree have actually installed support systems to help thwart some, some cracks that have started to form. So the tree owners have put some money down to maintain and manage this tree in perpetuity. Candidate number three, which I'm calling the Hannah Tree because it's located on Hannah Way, again, open to better names. This is a blue oak located right next to a dentist office with a fairly large trunk diameter of 44.5 inches, which is a pretty spectacularly sized tree. I pin this tree somewhere around 200 years old. And this tree also has a very unique story behind it. When this development went in, the tree was required to be preserved by the city arborist at that time. And as part of that tree preservation plan, a metal support system was created to help support a lateral limb on the tree. Right there. So some significant effort has gone into making sure that this tree was maintained and managed. So the next two candidates are actually groves that I'm bringing forward due to public comment. This is a, I don't want to say a singular grove, it's more of a collection of clusters of trees along the Oak Parkway Trail, primarily composed of blue oaks with a few interior live oaks. This span that I have highlighted is approximately 50 trees. And I am under the assumption that the intent behind the public comment with administering a landmark tree status over this swath is to further protect the trees from utility tree removal work. With groves, we're dealing with habitat value, and given the fact that these trees are located along a trail corridor, they do provide some beauty and some shade to, to the trail. So for those not familiar, on the western side, that is Willow Creek Drive, and the trail kind of spans to, on the southern or southeastern side, I would say, that's Oak Avenue. And here's a few pictures I've taken of some of the trees along that corridor.
I would definitely agree. There was a beautiful, large oak tree that was removed. I, I'm on Cimarron Circle, so it was right behind, between Cimarron Hill and St. John's, and it was definitely superior beauty.
Yeah, I know exactly what tree you're talking about, and that tree was actually located west of this.
Yes.
On, on the PG&E owned corridor, and yeah, that was, that was quite a loss. And the fifth and final candidate I have to talk to, to present to you today is another grove per public request. These two groves, which I've divided them into, are on Folsom State Prison property, primarily comprised of- Primarily comprised of, again, blue oaks with some interior live. This is approximately one hundred and forty acres aggregate combined. And given the fact that they are located on Folsom Prison property, there are, there is some historic value to consider with these trees. And again, when you're dealing with oak woodlands, there is substantial habitat value. I admittedly have not actually walked through this grove, but these are some pictures I was able to take from Google Street View. So ideally, the owner of a significant substantial tree would present or submit an application to the Community Development Department for landmark tree status with an arborist report that corroborates one of the findings that I've mentioned, which is historical value, habitat value, unusual species, or superior beauty. For the three individual trees that I presented to you today, I have educated the property owners or property managers on our landmark tree program. I've received a nodding head, but I have not received any applications.
So we should tell Leo Grover to submit his application?
Yes. But there is some latitude in the code that allows the city council on its own motion without an application, without a fee, to initiate the process on behalf of a tree owner for landmark tree status. With that, though, there are some considerations that I would like to make this council aware of. First off, the owner needs to give written consent. And the owner needs to be notified within thirty days of the hearing for the establishment of their tree. Additionally, again, the council needs to find that the subject tree meets one of these four findings. Historic value, habitat, unusual species, which doesn't apply to any of the ones that I've presented to you this evening, or superior beauty. Additionally, a third consideration is the fact that if you have a landmark tree, you can request that the city arborist assess your tree. And if the city arborist deems it necessary, the city will actually maintain your tree. So that comes with, one, waiving the application fee, but also the costs that come with maintaining a tree, which, when we're talking about large, mature trees, there's a lot of cost that comes with that, especially when we're talking about groves of trees.
As an example, how much would we be talking about in the grove of trees at the prison? And I want to keep in mind that we're probably, we would probably have to be dealing with two wardens because that entire property is not Folsom Prison. Part of it is California State Prison Sacramento. I don't know how Department of Corrections views, views that. If it's just a single plot of land to them, it may well be. But I would think that, given that we, the city, does not employ the people that actually will do this maintenance, it's going to be done on a subcontract. And I'm guessing there's significant security requirements for anybody that's working for a tree company to be on that property doing anything.
Interesting. So yes, first off, we would have to get, we would have to get permission to even move forward with that. We would probably want to get an inventory of those trees, which comes with probably somewhere between a four to five dollar per tree cost just to inventory those. So when we're dealing with one hundred and forty acres of oak woodlands, that adds up quite quickly. But I imagine that the initial permission of the owner, the warden, what have you, would probably be our first obstacle in that to begin with.
Yeah, and it may not even be the warden. It may be, maybe that you have to go to the management team at Corrections.
Correct, correct. And so again, this, the, the two groves I'm bringing forward due to public comment, not necessarily staff recommendations.
Personally, I'd, I'd love to see those groves at the, at the prison get, get designated because then it would limit, you know, we have several times in the time that I've been sitting here, we've had corrections bring forth proposals that would have led to construction on large-scale construction on areas at that site. And, you know, so it'll be interesting to hear what the conversation is with corrections about putting that restriction on themselves. Last time was the medical facility that didn't end up moving forward because I think they built it in Tracy or Stockton or someplace.
Well, that actually kind of brings me to my final slide. So this is kind of the conclusion of my presentation. And so at this point, I request some direction from this council on how you would like staff to move forward. We have a few options. First of those being, does the council move to initiate the process of all five candidates being designated as landmarks? Or does this council move to initiate the process of some of these candidates being established as landmark trees? Or does this council prefer that staff continue to work with owners of these trees to educate about our landmark tree program and encourage applications?
I have a question.
I have questions. With regard to the prison groves, does the state of California supersede our jurisdiction over those? And designating them as historic or landmark or anything else carry any weight at all with their ability to make modifications to their property?
I'm going to defer that question to the attorney.
Thank you, council member. It really depends on, on their approach and whether they would like to cooperate with us. It also depends on the cost.
Are they compelled to cooperate with us in any way? They're not? Okay, all right.
They're independent, sovereign jurisdiction.
That's what I thought, okay. How many landmark trees are you capable of managing? And do your regular job, Ms. Nunez?
Oh, that's a good question.
What's the upper limit here? Because there are, there are a lot of other trees that people might consider to meet these criteria because there's lots of large diameter oaks scattered throughout town.
Quite frankly, this most recent application for landmark tree, again, was the first one that we've received in twenty-three years. And so the landmark tree program was quite dusty.
Yeah.
And so we're kind of dusting off those cobwebs. Currently with that new addition, we have nine landmark trees and two small groves, which is manageable at this point. Singular, isolated trees being added to the registry shouldn't, or I wouldn't anticipate adding a huge workload. Large groves in the span of one hundred and forty acres, which currently our code doesn't really detail.
Groves aren't really a designation, are they?
The code does allow for groves, but...
No, there's, there's some that have been designated in Folsom Ranch.
Yeah. The code, however, doesn't really detail what maintenance and management...
And which trees within the grove are actually landmark?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
It's a little ambiguous, it's a little nebulous.
Yeah, okay. Well, for whatever it's worth, educating and encouraging the property owners to seek the designation, I think, is all I would encourage. The, the grove that we already have responsibility for taking care of along the Oak Avenue power line right of way, I think, would be a perfectly good addition to our landmark group. And then the prison property, just simply because we don't really have jurisdiction over it. And I don't want them to go, ha-ha, take care of all of it, and then have a, you know, a workload that we can't manage without extreme expense.
And may I just...
I would set that one a five.
I apologize, sir. Just want to add, the code, our municipal code, does not require the city to maintain. It does allow the city arborists to provide inspection at the request of the property owner on the health of the tree and also provide a recommendation on, on the maintenance, but does not require that the city maintain or using city fund to maintain. The city does have a tree fund that can help, but that's a decision the council will have to make.
To the arborist's point, though, even cataloging or even giving advice on those groves would be a pretty monumental task. And I don't, I don't think we should take it on. That's just my opinion.
The city arborists may inspect.
Yeah, I think that's, that's an important nuance because we could drain the tree fund just on maintenance.
Yeah, the implication is that we will if requested, not we might if requested. I mean, that kind of defeats the whole purpose of the program.
Yeah, it's a very, it's a, it's a, there's subjective language in there. But yeah, you are correct that there is a little bit of onus on the part of myself at the request of an owner.
So anyway, this is my opinion.
And the other, the other issue to keep in mind on, that's great that Leo has maintained his tree and that others have maintained some of the other ones. But the grove at the prison, in the thirty-eight years that I've been here, I've never seen anybody touch a tree out there. Cows may, but that's it. I've never seen anybody, I've never seen, there's only one time I've ever seen humans out there. And it may have been people that were doing, monitoring something related to the cattle.
I have a question about the tree that, that fell at Taco Loco. So was that a oak tree?
Yes.
It was an oak tree. So is that, is that a tree that just had not had like routine maintenance? And therefore it became sick and then it toppled over in a storm?
It's not uncommon for our native oaks, especially the blue oaks. They are what I call fragile giants. They don't respond well to development. And oaks operate on a much slower timetable than people do. And it can often take a decade, two decades for a tree to actually start showing symptoms of, of stress from a development project. And it can take them quite a while to let us know that they didn't like what we did to them. You know, when grading and soil compaction and all that stuff happened. And that's quite the case that happened at Taco Loco.
Got it.
And probably the same as what happened to the tree at Winco.
And I have a question about funding. Are there, does the state ever provide funding to maintain or protect oak trees?
I...
Or grants, grants?
I am not sure. I would have to look into that and get back to you on that.
Just curious.
Yeah.
We've never received any state money for maintenance of trees.
Have we ever looked, ever asked for it? Or do we know of any grants? I don't know. Anyways, so yeah, I'm, 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 I'm on, you know, I'm really big on educating property owners.
Councilman, you have a question for you? You have, mine is a couple of summary points. Thank you for bringing these ones. And the same question I have, whether urban forestry from the state or even the feds, you know, they are loading more and more money because of this environmental heats and up balance, and trees are going to be one of those, you know, bringing the, the global warming. So I heard I was meeting with one of friends out there and she said it's more and more money is available. I'll connect you with that person and see whether we have some funds for this. So right now we have nine trees. How much it is costing city to maintain those, approximate?
At the moment, it only takes a cursory review from myself. And again, the code states that it is at the request of the tree owner.
Yeah.
And the majority of our landmark trees are actually owned by private entities, which I have not received requests from recently. So our Arbor Day event last year was actually centered around maintaining two of our favored valley oak landmark trees by mulching. So, yeah, I think you were actually there.
Yeah.
So at this time, it's not really costing the city a whole lot with what we have. But when we're talking about pruning a mature oak tree, it's not uncommon to see a bill of twelve hundred, fifteen hundred dollars.
Per year, approximately?
Per tree.
Per tree?
Per tree.
Per year, okay.
She didn't say per year, she just said per tree.
Oh.
They're not necessarily done annually. It's when they, it's when they need it.
Correct.
It's kind of, it's hard to predict when you're going to need to do something to it.
It's a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not pruning trees every year.
Okay, that, that is the reason why I'm always putting the per year, you know, the budget and grants, you know, the way we, you know, make some, you know, funds available for the new plantation. That's why, you know, finance directory is, you know, smiling. It's per year, right? We want to make sure the dollars.
Yeah, at this, at this time, maintenance is not, is not acting as a huge strain on our tree fund whatsoever.
Right. You know, while you're explaining, you know, some creative thoughts, you know, that's why I mean it's going to be a little longer, but I'll make it fast. You know, our, our city logo is distinctive by nature, right? And we are bringing more attractions to us. And our tourism bureau is, you know, working hard and Intel and some technology companies. And if they want to go around, you know what? This evening, after a nice dinner at Tsetse Street, let's go and watch the historic trees, those things which we have preserved. Maybe, you know, bringing that concept into it is, you know, one thing I would like to. That way, even, even though we are going to drain some funds, but it is going to be bringing that historic nature to our town. That's one of those, yeah.
Like a charge tour of our beautiful historic tree.
We don't have to, let, 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 let tourism bureau figure it out. We don't have to do that.
The dermatology tree.
Yeah.
Tourism bureau figure it out, right? But we can always be partnering with our Folsom Tourism, you know, economic development team. That's, that's a good one. That way, you know, in the evening, it is too hot. At least they don't have to go anywhere, but at least go under the tree shade and have a good moment and talk about all those things. There was one question and was mine, you answered. One hundred and seventy-five years.
Except they're on, they're on private property, though, I can't...
Yeah, 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 no, that's where I'm coming again. One hundred and seventy-five years, wow, that's historic, right? So how do we work it out, those ones? You know, that's one thing. I think even from far, people can see it. They don't have to go underneath their backyard also, right? Taking the pictures, that matters, and going out there. Since it is not costing that much, I'm in favor of even city council initiating some sort of, you know, dialogue with the residents and maybe doing one more research, you know, around the United States. If there is a historically designated tree, is the property value is going up? Don't know. We can do some research and encourage the residents, hey, fifty thousand more, that house sold out. I mean, encouraging them. I, I don't want to get into that business, but, you know, back of my mind, I'm a realtor, right? So just want to bring some of those thoughts to support your concept, right? Not to drain the city, you know, the new trees money, and the same time, bring the beauty to our town. Our town is growing. We need more attractions, right? With that, thank you so much for bringing this. I didn't know all this, but you educated me.
So Amy, a clarifying question. So if, if we say, yes, we would like you to pursue those three individual, you know, privately owned trees, you contact them, say the city council would like to designate this as a landmark tree. Please respond within thirty days, whatever. If they don't, we cannot designate it as a landmark tree, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so they have to give affirmation that they want to, okay. So of course I want to hear from the public, but, but my general feeling is that, yes, I want to move forward with those three and then designating the trees on the city-owned property in that grove. I would ask us, though, to not totally dismiss the groves on, on CDCR property, and here's why. As we know, there has been some chatter about, you know, that property that, that fronts Natoma Street is on the Department of General Services surplus list. And we know there has been some chatter about possibly developing that with high-density housing, which, you know, I, I don't think anybody here thinks that's a good idea. We are still working with the wardens, with CDCR, with the, with their facilities manager to try to get that property off of the surplus list. Because as it was mentioned by Bruce Klein with regard to PG&E, wardens come and go, CDCR secretaries come and go, city staff comes and goes, city councils come and go. And we want to make sure that that land, in my opinion, is the most bucolic setting in all of the city, should stay that way in perpetuity. If for some reason we cannot get that land off of the surplus list, I think of this as a tool by which we add another layer of protection to say, hey, wait a second. You know, don't think that you're going to come in and build something here because we, those are protected trees. And of course, you know, CDCR has to agree. But I would add that recently, a Folsom resident nominated Folsom State Prison for our cultural inventory list, which is basically our historical registry for the city. And after first saying no, they weren't going to support it, CDCR changed directions and said, yeah, we'll go ahead. We'll, you know, that, that is a historical building, you know, whatever, property. And they, they agreed to have it on, knowing that it doesn't mean that, you know, that we can go in and have access to the prison or whatever. So I would just say, let's keep that one... So I would just say, let's keep that one, you know, kind of in the back of our mind and know that if we need to come at some point and kind of add that, just, just to add some protection so that that area does not get developed.
And I completely agree with you, Sarah, on the stuff at Folsom Prison. And I think, I, I think we need to be aware of the cost if we are, actually are going to go out and do the maintenance on the trees. But I think it does provide a level of protection. And I think that based on conversations that have taken place over the years with Department of Corrections, despite the fact that General Services has put that property on the list of surplus properties, I don't think that's anything that CDCR is going to agree with.
No, they don't, for sure, yeah.
So if this provides them a little bit more comfort, that, that might be incentive enough for them to go along with it.
Is, is, is the warden or wardens, are they even able to respond and acknowledge the designation? Or would it have to be the governor?
I'll just tell you, the wardens were the last to know about. Every time I kept saying, did you hear, did you hear, did you hear? They, they were the last to know and the last to, the last ones asked to weigh in on the suitability of that area being developed. And thankfully, the wardens, including recently retired Warden Hill, you know, said adamantly, no. We know there's all kinds of security concerns and stuff. So, no, the wardens themselves would not, they would be able to provide some input, but it's ultimately like the CDCR secretary who's going to have to weigh in.
Councilmember Aquino, would you happen to have contact information?
Of course, yeah, I'll, I'll connect you.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, good. And also just want to make a comment, what Mike said also, you know, how many you can maintain. We don't want to over-button you as well, right? You know, even working on those. But think about our passionate volunteers, you know, all of them through the Friends of, you know, Folsom Parkways and Folsom Garden Club. I do see Mr. Goss is sitting here, former Parks and Director, very passionate. And Bruce is not here, he may be, you know, seeing us. So think about that, they will be your helping hand to bring the beauty to, you know, more beauty to Folsom. Thanks.
Any other comments? We do have a request to speak from Robert Goss.
I'll start his timer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Krista, Elaine, good to be back once in a while. Hey, everybody.
Here's your three minutes.
Robert.
Oh, my, still three minutes.
Shut him down, Krista.
Robert Goss, 1144 Kidder Way and a board member of Friends of Folsom Parkways. And unless Bruce has Wi-Fi in his deer stand, he's not seeing the meeting tonight, so. So real quick, I urge a full, wholehearted yes on behalf of the Friends of Folsom Parkways on the Grove designation for the Oak Parkway Trail. If I may, if I remember how to do this, could I go back to one of your slides? Right there, there.
Still the number?
Yeah. Something, tonight's action is direction to staff. So you're not, you're not approving the grove, you're providing direction to staff. So I would ask or suggest that you consider staff kind of looking at what these groves really mean or have, have we captured the extent? So look on the right side into the right of the yellow, that's BT Collins Park. It is a park, but there's a phenomenal grove of oak trees in the park. And it really, I would suggest to you that it was part of this grove at one time. So that's one example, and I think there might be others or other trees in parks. And again, we don't need to muddle this up with trees in parks and groves in parks, but I think it should be talked about and get, define it so that it's clear. In Nissenon Park, there is a phenomenal, I believe, value oak tree in Nissenon Park. And then that whole knoll is covered in trees. Those, that grove and that tree are different in Empire Ranch than in historic Folsom. I mean, biologically, they're different, but it's a different part of Folsom. So there's something there. And to YK's point about the groves and, and if there, you know, if there was a designation of different groves around the city, you do have a visitation and a tour, tour opportunity, not so much for tourists from out of town, but tour, tourists in the town. If you've ever been to the hillsides of Empire Ranch where there's some of the, not city-built trails, but the Empire Ranch Elliot Homes developer-built trails that go through Empire Ranch, there are some phenomenal groves, again, that are very different than, you know, than even the Folsom Prison Grove. So I think it's some, should be something that's talked about. And decide whether there is some distinction to be made or some all inclusion that could be considered to do something with that. To Councilmember Aquino's point about coming and going, yeah, here, I'm, I'm an example of coming and going of staff. And, and we do. And I want to segue that into PG&E because a year ago, right about this time, we were talking about the PG&E, you know, kind of, we called it the assault on the, the oak trees of the Oak Parkway corridor. It didn't happen. It was a success, really, just through engagement and the willingness of the city council to say, PG&E, you got to get to the table, and they did. That was great. My understanding, because we got an email that they're back with their annual, you know, applicant, you know, encroachment application, and that needs to be dealt with. The problem is that as a stakeholder organization in the, in the city, Friends of Folsom Parkways, we don't get the notification. And, and we don't necessarily want the notification on everything, just the stuff that we're interested in. So I don't know if there's a way or a format or possibly some refinement to the ordinance that, that says when utility companies, whether it's SMUD or PG&E or WAPA or even our own utility, Hinkle Creek, you know, where we have to do utility work, where there are oak groves, Friends of Folsom Parkways would like to know about it and we'd like to engage. And the ordinance today says seven days' notice. Well, nobody can really engage in seven days. So for a variety of reasons, Friends of Folsom Parkways and Bruce specifically, a year ago suggested that the ordinance be revisited and walk through and see, does it really meet our needs today? Because we are in, you know, in a more heightened climate of public safety, fire safety out there. So we need, this needs to be done. We can't save trees blindly. We have to just do it smartly. And we would like to engage.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up, Robert, I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
So we would like to engage and, and we are volunteering to meet with city manager and, and Amy and the Community Development Department and Parks and Rec to engage and talk through this and provide some input. So we're here and we'd like to, we'd like to play. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak to this issue? Okay, so, oh, sorry.
Hello, Mayor, fellow council members and city manager. Thanks for allowing us to speak to this and thanks to the, our city arborists and others that have helped bring this forward. Simply wanted to just echo a lot of what Robert said and just thank you for actually, last time, as what Robert was mentioning with PG&E, we were just hoping that these landmark trees and tying that into that would be something that we wouldn't have to revisit every year when their private contractors come in that don't know the deals that we've worked out with all of the staff. And then all of a sudden, here we are again, wasting your time and wasting our time. And so I'd just like to thank Robert and Bruce and Julie and others who, who helped, you know, bring this to light and that you guys teamed up with them to make a, a good win for everybody. I think PG&E and us last time. And I just hope that we don't have to revisit this every year and waste your time and our time. So again, thank you and good night.
Thank you, Lynn. Any more comments?
I, I was just going to suggest that, thank you for your comments, by the way, Councilmember Aquino. I think that really changed my opinion about the, the prison groves. It, it probably would be worthwhile, though, to perhaps consider some definition around what a landmark grove consists of, because each and every tree is not a landmark tree. So what are the actual limitations on changes to the grove? So not, you know, once we start unpacking some of this stuff, it starts creating questions about how you, how you handle that situation, right?
I agree. If we're going to be designating groves, we need to set parameters on what.
What does that mean?
Constitutes or what qualifies as protected landmarks within that grove. Obviously, we don't want a two-inch willow sprout being designated a landmark within the grove. But when we're, we, we probably want to limit a species and size threshold when we're talking about the groves.
And I agree with that, I think that's a really good idea. And with regard to Robert's comment about doing this, doing the designation on city-owned property, I don't really know that we need to, because we already know what the use is. It's not like we're going to allow development on that. The, the thing that we don't have control over is what happens on private property or any other property that we don't own. So I think that's really the distinction there. I don't disagree with you that there's great stuff on, which is why we got into a weird situation here, because we own the property, but PG&E's got Neesmen on it, so.
Correct. And PG&E has come back with a new work scope and they are being very cooperative this time around. I'm actually going to be meeting with their vegetation management supervisor this week to walk the corridor. And they seem to be quite willing to work with us. So I'm remaining cautiously optimistic that we can see some changes in their work scope to prune rather than remove a lot of the trees along that corridor. That's good news.
Good.
Thank you. Do you feel like you have sufficient information?
What's the last task, last slide you're asking, you're going, you know, you need something from this council, right?
Yes, so the ask was for some direction. And from what I gather, this council is supportive of the city initiating landmark tree establishment of the three privately owned isolated trees, moving forward with the city-owned grove and then also reaching out to CDCR about the prison grove. So this council can expect some resolutions in the future on designating new trees, hopefully with owner consent. And I will keep you apprised of correspondence with CDCR.
Can we add one more thing to that, that where, Chapter 12.16 that talks about tree preservation, looking at, at the municipal code and maybe some tweaks that we need to make per Robert's comments? And, and I know Bruce in the past about landmark tree status or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have received some requests for amendments and staff also has a kind of a fix-it list for the ordinance. You know, the ordinance is now two and a half years old. So we've gotten to try it on, stretch the jeans out a little bit and we've found out where maybe we need to do some amendments. And so council can expect that staff will be bringing those proposed edits forward in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Amy, you have a great job and you are appreciated.
Yes.
While we have her here, can I just make a, a general comment about trees? I don't know if my colleagues received it, but I received an email today from a resident basically talking about how the direction from the city was, although, you know, landscape watering is limited, we do want you to water your trees and preserve them and some other things that I'll forward to you. But I, I don't know if you've already done this, but if you haven't, I think it might be helpful, some kind of a video or social media campaign or something to people about, in this time of drought, when you are not watering your lawn or your other landscaping, the proper way to, to water their trees. And it's not just around the trunk, but the, the drip line and all that kind of stuff, right? And how long it needs to be and, I, I don't know, just some general education for the public, I think.
You know, I, I think that's a great idea. So in 2008, I bought a lot, had forty trees on it. And I didn't do a good job of taking care of some of the trees on my lot. And so several of them died. But I, in retrospect, I wish I had known how to bear, better care for the trees that I lost.
Interesting. So a year ago, with our partnership with the Sacramento Tree Foundation, we actually did do a webinar on properly watering, watering your trees during the drought.
And was that based on the type of tree? I mean, could we repost it?
Yeah, we can definitely repost it. I mean, it, it was very general, it was about an hour long.
And did you guys get into difference, um, different species of trees?
We could do, we could do a little social media campaign, refresh it.
Not exactly. But there's definitely room for adding that kind of information.
Yeah, because I, I think it's important, because one of the things that you're really not supposed to be doing is watering oak trees. To the, that's one of the things.
That is such a loaded question, so.
I wasn't trying to put you on the spot on that, but, you know, oak trees basically do, for the most part, get treated very differently than other trees.
They do. However, when we are experiencing winters and wet seasons that are not particularly wet, which is when oak trees recharge their water reserves, it does not actually hurt your oak trees to do a monthly deep soaking on a monthly basis during the summer.
And see, the, the.
So while we've got you, what's a deep soaking?
Well, and the email from this resident was talking about the cost that he had incurred over the summer watering these trees per the direction of the city. And I was thinking that if you are watering the trees, but not watering your landscape or your lawn as much, there would still be a net savings. It seemed to me that it should not be costing him more than it has in the years past. So that's what I think, just some guidance about, you know, if you only needed to really do a deep soak once a month or a couple times a month.
More information, because up until recently, landscapes were installed in such a way that trees were not put on a separate irrigation station. And so you would need to landscape your, or you would need to irrigate your whole landscape to get water to your tree if you weren't hand-watering. State now, with their ordinance, requires trees be on their own separate station. And so if you drive south of 50, you're going to notice that all of the houses on the other side of the freeway have separate irrigation systems for their trees. So when we get into situations where you're wanting to shut off your water, reduce your irrigation, you can still get water to your trees, because at the end of the day, regardless of what else you have in your landscape, you cannot replace, you cannot replace a twenty-year-old tree. So.
Let alone a two-hundred-year-old one. Thank you, Amy, this was very good.
Deep soaking. Since we're here.
Soaker hose is the best means or drip. And you want to water in such a way that when you stick a screwdriver or some sort of probe in the soil, you want the soil to be wet about twelve inches down. And so depending on what your percolation rate is and how much absorption your soil can take, you might have to do a soaking period where you water for a while, turn off your irrigation, let it soak, apply again.
Okay, to get through the Folsom concrete.
Right, exactly. Yeah, because our wonderful Folsom soil is not exactly conducive to, to deep water percolation.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Amy, so we think you have everything you need? Okay, that moves us on to city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Friends of the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary and the Moore Real Estate Group are hosting a pancake breakfast for dinner from six to nine PM on Saturday, October 15th at the Zoo Sanctuary. And tickets include pancakes plus all the traditional breakfast fare. And proceeds from the event benefit the Friends, a nonprofit organization dedicated to enriching the lives of the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary animals. And you can find out more at Folsom Pancake Breakfast dot com.
Except it's actually, it's breakfast for dinner, so it's not actually in the morning.
Yeah, six to nine PM on Saturday, October 15th. And then if you want breakfast at actual breakfast time, a week later, you can join the Folsom Fire Department for an open house and pancake breakfast on Saturday, October 22nd. And that event will be held during traditional breakfast hours of nine AM to noon at Fire Station 35. Five dollars a person and ages two and under are free. And parking will be available across the street at Walmart. We ask you to join the Folsom Police and Fire Departments for a Public Safety Trunk or Treat Event from 11 AM to 2 PM on Saturday, October 29th. And that event will be held at the Folsom Police Department at 46 Natoma Street. What else do I have? So many things. The Indian Festival of Diwali or Deepavali, also known as the Festival of Lights, is traditionally celebrated with the use of California State Fire Marshal-registered safe and sane fireworks. The use of approved fireworks in conjunction with this festival may occur Saturday, October 22nd through Monday, October 24th in the city of Folsom. And finally, the Wildwood Performing Arts Foundation will present an evening with John Carter Cash from five to 10 PM on Friday, October 21st at the Folsom Community Center. Proceeds from the event benefit the Folsom Cash Art Trail and the Wildwood Performing Arts Foundation. And that's all I have, Mayor. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Rosario.
Okay, well, I want to give out a huge congratulations to Visconti Restaurant and Powerhouse Ministries that recently celebrated 30 years in business here in Folsom. I had a conversation with Nancy a few days before the celebration, and she mentioned that when Powerhouse Ministries opened, she remembers going to Visconti's that had just opened to go eat dinner, so it was a cute memory. I also had the pleasure to be on a panel last Tuesday at the Livability Summit on their housing the unhoused, and it's really great to hear that there's a plan in place about how Sacramento is going to deal with the unhoused. I want to give a big congratulations to the Folsom Police Foundation for a successful gala this past Saturday. There was a speaker, Samantha Poor, who spoke so eloquently about the realities of mental health and law enforcement. Her husband, Sean Poor, a CHP officer, took his life in 2018. The Folsom Homecoming Parade is tomorrow on Sutter Street, so for all you Bulldog fans, it's a great time to celebrate them. A very popular nonprofit showcase takes place this Thursday evening at the Folsom Community Center at 5:00 p.m. There's a $25 charge that goes right back to the local nonprofits. Spirit Brews and Fights takes place this Saturday, also in the Historic District, from 2:30 to 5:30. Tickets are still available, but they do sell out. And then also coming up is a Historic Soapbox Derby that takes place on October 15th and 16th. Kids should sign up ASAP, and this is a really fun competition of kids that compete with their little derbies from wool down, all the way down to, I think it's reading. The Folsom Rotary Club is sponsoring music at the Zito Amphitheater for the next four Sundays from 1:00 to 3:00, so it's a great time for all you music lovers. And then I also just want to share that the past couple of months, we've had some really light agendas, and it just makes me wonder, are there things in the pipeline that maybe the city may need direction from the council on that we should be looking at? Because it's a great opportunity, like now it's 814, but it would have been great to look, is there a list of things that the city needs direction on? This would be a good time to add it on to the agenda, and that's it.
YK?
I echo Vice Mayor's comments. Visconti, you know, longstanding organization, longstanding restaurant, and Powerhouse Ministry, a wonderful nonprofit. Congratulations to them. I missed both the events, I was in somewhere else.
I noticed.
You noticed. I just, I know Future Folsom, Mr. Joe Gallardi, our CEO for Future Folsom, mentioned we are able to retain the powerhouse, power schools in Folsom. You know, they were at the verge of leaving Folsom. I want to thank our city administration, Elaine Anderson, especially in partnership with Joe, we were able to bring them back and put them in our town. It's a two-plus-billion-dollar company. We don't want to lose those kind of businesses, despite we all talk about our greatness on other things, right? Thank you again. I just want to call it out publicly from, you know, this podium than outside. And also, as, you know, my council colleagues are indirectly hinting me about, you know, how we can bring more technology firms here, I met with AMD, AMD in town, and they want to grow, and I met with their senior leadership, and they are giving, you know, again, one more helping hand, how we can bring high-paying technology jobs and bring the technology domain to Folsom and pave the path from Silicon Valley to Folsom. That's another thing that is still going on. I was impressed the way AMD was talking about what they were thinking all the time outside California when I met them. That's an awesome one as well. And I also attended the Oktoberfest, I missed yours, my friend. Pine Brook Village, you know, that's awesome, fun people, senior home living and everybody there as well. But this is not but not least, you know, CSD, you know, Lorraine, thank you again for leading the team, and Tom as well. Tom, you may be listening, my voice, right? Thank you. It's a lot of work, believe me, pulling that together and, you know, coordinating and some of those, you know, picking up the food from all over the town and serving the 60-plus senior homes. It's a lot of coordination work. Thank you again. Not but not least, you know, this is election season, ballots are arriving, everything is mail-in ballots, and, you know, I heard even, mine was, I believe, stolen from USPS, you know, breaking the thing. Yeah, exactly. You know, please, reach out to your county if you see that kind of thing. There are some incidents, yeah, there are some incidents, but please, what, you know, it's our right being a citizen here. Thank you again, good evening, Folsom.
You know, it's interesting, I already got a text that my, that it went into the mail, and then I got it today, and I got another text that said you should have received it. And so, yeah, there's securities behind it.
Sarah?
I have no report.
Mike?
Just a couple requests for some public works projects to come back before us for discussion. The traffic controls that we've been considering between the lake entrance and the intersection of East Natoma and Folsom Lake Crossing, please, because I understand that we have at least a partial design for some median work there that may or may not be fitting a budget expectation that we all had at one point. And then I was asked by a very nice neighbor when I was out walking neighborhoods to have us consider doing some crosswalk pavement marking at the intersection of Placer Mine and Prospect Court. They have a Speedway, have a little mini Speedway going through the middle of the neighborhood there that people are disregarding the stop signs frequently. Not that that doesn't happen occasionally, but they seem to have a large incidence of that, and it was suggested that some, you know, Abbey Road-style crosswalk markings might help people recognize that there's a reason to come to a stop there fully. And then for our water and sewer expert back there in the back of the room, the Hinkle Creek Working Group, and I would like to have us reconsider a non-invasive way to replace the two steel pipes that are not underneath Hinkle Creek in the nature area back there. So if we can get that on to an agenda sometime soon to reconsider, I'd appreciate that. And then just two quick things, I wanted to thank everybody at the Muslim Center for the really lovely morning open house that they held two weekends ago. Really nice, very educational, and really terrific community, faith community that we have here in Folsom. We're lucky that, we're lucky that they're there. And then at SAGCOG, we every year have a thing called the Youth Leadership Academy, and not that there's many of them watching this, but if you happen to be a high school student at Folsom High or Vista Del Lago, now is the time to sign up for the Youth Leadership Academy. It's a great opportunity to get some experience with some of the things that our city staff do in terms of transportation planning, zoning planning, and just public works projects in general. It's a nice primer on those things for high school-age students. And you can find information at the SAGCOG website, which is just S-A-G-C-O-G dot org, and then I think if you do slash YLA, you can find the instructions for that. Thank you very much.
Okay, regional sand meets tomorrow. Nothing particularly exciting going on at RT. Much of the discussion lately has been about what's going on, what may or may not happen with Measure A, and there's some events related to Measure A that are going to be taking place between now and Election Day. So look at the information. I know I got a mailer for it in my, at home today, so it's interesting information for people to look at, and there's unfortunately not a lot of detailed description in the projects that would be included, but in the city of Folsom, it would include things like repaving, it would be money for the connector, that, you know, basically, we've gotten a lot of benefit out of the fact that we've, we're just about done with the stuff in Folsom or will be in the foreseeable future, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that whole project is necessarily moving forward, because there's a lot more things to build. And having a couple of great segments along the alignment without having the whole alignment taken care of doesn't really resolve the issue. So that's more things for consideration. Again, thank you to all the people that were involved in Community Service Day. Congratulations to Visconti's and to the folks at Powerhouse Ministries. And that is a funny story about Nancy going to Visconti's right after they started that. And I would also like to, City Manager has informed me that unfortunately, we had a longtime Folsom, city of Folsom employee, Sue Ryan, and unfortunately, her daughter passed away today, so we will, we will close the meeting in honor of Sean Orion. We'll adjourn at 8:22.